We will have to proceed with our last session of the day. Please be seated into the conference hall. And here you should be very excited to be listening to our one of the most famous lawmakers in Korea and who is also most renowned and most achieved lawmakers in Korean history. And before we begin with introduction of lawmaker Na Kyung-won, who is the chairwoman of the National Parliament Session of the Foreign Affairs Committee. Our president Park Jung-nil of the Korean Journalist Association will be here to give a brief introduction of our session lecturer.
Hi, everyone. You guys must be one out with a tight schedule from the morning until now. But I'm sure that now is the time to refresh yourselves because we are joined by Representative Na Kyung-won, one of the most popular and competent female politician in Korea. She is the first chairwoman of the National Assembly Foreign Affairs and Unification Committee in the constitutional history of Korea. Representative Na is also a three-term congresswoman from the ruling party. She is a rising next generation political leader actively serving as board director of Special Olympics and the chairperson for Special Olympics Korea. We are so fortunate to have such a busy politician like her in Korea with us today. Representative Na is here to raise our awareness about the importance of inter-Korean talks and the significance of unification of the Korean Peninsula. Ladies and gentlemen, please give her a big round of applause.
Good afternoon, journalists and distinguished guests. Kyung-won is my name, my Korean name, is a little difficult to pronounce. Please call just by initials KW. KW, Kyung-won, KW, Korean Woman, KW. You can remember me easily. It's a great honor to be here. When I was invited to this forum, I feel very comfortable because during the first term, I was a spokeswoman for the party for four years, almost for four years. So I think I'm very familiar with the journalists. Don't you agree, Korean journalist? Yeah, so I almost during the first term, I eat almost every meal with the journalists. Not only meal, but also alcohol. Korean foreign policy is in the middle of very important and difficult moment. There are many issues to be solved. The title 70th Anniversary of National Division, Think About Unification on the Korean Peninsula Means A Lot. I believe that the conference will serve as a momentum to form strong global consensus about the need for north-south unification. Today, my keynote address is about trust-based diplomacy for inter-Korean talks. I hope this topic will open up discussions on what we need to do for unification and for our next generation. Let me start this speech by putting the following question first. What is North Korea for us? The answer is that North Korea is, on the one hand, a serious security threat to us, but on the other hand, a partner with which we have to work together on the way leading to the unification of Korea. This double character or identity of North Korea poses acute problems in devising and implementing our policy vis-à-vis North Korea. Let me hasten to add that such a difficulty should not discourage us from articulating a North Korea policy that will contribute to the survival and prosperity of our nation. Let us canvass the complicated diplomatic and security challenges surrounding the Korean Peninsula today. The security situation in Northeast Asia, which includes the Korean Peninsula, has continued to deteriorate for the past 20 years, and its unpredictability and instability has increased. Despite a long series of agreements, such as the 1994 Geneva Agreed Framework, the Joint Declaration of September 19th, 2005, the Agreement of February 13, 2007, the Agreement of February 29, 2012, the crisis surrounding the North Korean nuclear program has continued to worsen. North Korea went so far as to declare itself to be a nuclear weapon state in its constitution and proclaimed the policy of pursuing economic development in tandem with maintaining its status as a nuclear weapon stage. North Korea has also upgraded its WMD capabilities and strengthened its ability to pose asymmetrical threats such as cyber attack in addition to its long-range artillery capability, thus strengthening our security in a serious way. In effect, the U.S. Army and the intelligence are emphasizing the need of strengthening ability to provide warning and defense against an attack. They see that North Korea is spurring the development of load mobile intercontinental ballistic missiles. Admirer William Gottlieb, the head of the U.S. Northern Command, told reporters on April 7 at the Pentagon that North Korea has the ability to put in on a nuclear weapon, on a KN-08, and shoot it to U.S. He once again emphasized that this kind of assessment is made under prudent decision, not an over-vigilance. A complicating factor is this array of the five parties participating in the six-party talks in their response to the serious threat posed by North Korea. The six-party talks have been in suspension since December 2008. The cooperation among the five parties has been undermined, for instance, by Japan's attempt to discuss the issue of Japanese abductees at a separate bilateral forum with North Korea. It is well-known that Russia is recently trying to strengthen its ties with North Korea. In contrast, the relation between North Korea and China, that has been the major restraining influence over North Korea, have recently reached a nadir. The United States appears reluctant to engage in another round of negotiations with North Korea, justifying its reluctance with the policy of strategic patience. Under such circumstances, in particular, the lack of coordination among the five powers, the momentum for the resolution of the North Korean nuclear problem appears to be lost. If one turns attention to the domestic situation of North Korea, the administration of Kim Jong-un appears to enjoy a certain degree of stability. However, no one can be sure how long such stability will last. There appears to be a generational change in the political leadership, enabling Kim Jong-un to move from the policy of passively respecting the dictates left behind by his father, Kim Jong-il, to the policy of imposing his own independent authority on North Korea society. However, the frequent reshuffle of the political leadership, while perhaps beneficial to securing the allegiance of Kim Jong-un's underlines, may bring instability to the political system. Reportedly, the economic situation of North Korea has improved. However, sustainable growth of the North Korean economy is hardly guaranteed in the absence of a fundamental reform of the economic system itself. If the economic growth is discontinued, the dissatisfaction of the North Korean population is sure to increase. Under the circumstances, it is vital that Korea play a leading and coordinating role for the resolution of number of highly difficult problems of East Asia. However, Korea's room for diplomatic maneuver is restricted, as is implied, demonstrated by the recent diplomatic conflict between the United States and China over the issue of AIIB and THAAD. It is quite obvious that Korea should cooperate closely with both of them. The already difficult diplomatic situation is further compounded by the diplomatic tensions between China and Japan and those between Korea and Japan. Thus, one can conclude that our region, Northeast Asia, is in a highly unsettled and tumultuous situation posing a substantial challenge for Korean diplomacy. It is quite evident that the ultimate objective of our policy vis-à-vis North Korea is peaceful unification of the South and the North. However, it is imperative for us to expand our horizon beyond this ultimate destination and pursue the policy of peaceful coexistence on the way leading to the peaceful unification of Korea. One should be aware that overly emotional and inarticulate discussions of national unification might prove to be counterproductive, giving rise to unnecessary misunderstandings and hindering, rather than promoting the goal of Korean unification. Let me hasten to add that the pursuit of peaceful coexistence does not imply the reunification of the goal of national unification. We will be able to achieve our final objective of Korean unification only by going through the interim stages of peaceful coexistence, thus strengthening the foundation for unification. Through the stage of peaceful coexistence, we will be able to gradually eliminate heterogeneity between the South and the North while fortifying the homogeneity between the two. Such gradual changes will be possible only after the status quo, however undesirable it may be, is stabilized. To reach this interim stage of peaceful coexistence, both South and North should play a more active role and to that end, should secure cooperation and support from their neighboring states. In presenting the end state of peaceful coexistence, the final goal of national unification, it is imperative that one communicate the positive image of unified Korea as a country founded on the universal values such as freedom, human rights, democracy, and market economy. It is also very important to assure Korea's neighbors that Korean unification will be beneficial to Korea's neighbors contributing to regional peace and security. These tasks are as follows. First, the gradual elimination of social heterogeneity between South and the North. Second, the resolution of humanitarian problems, including the question of families separated into South and the North, and the improvement of human rights situation. Third, the development of North Korean economy and the improvement of the quality of life for the North Korean population. Fourth, the reduction of North Korean military threats, including the North Korean nuclear program and achievement of military stability on the Korean Peninsula. It goes without saying that all these four tasks are important, and it is impossible to set a priority among them. It is essential to carry out these tasks in a harmonious way so that they can synthesize with one another. In other words, we have to aim for the construction of a community pursuing common happiness on economic community, a social community, and a security community. The first principle is that Korea should play a leading role while taking into account, rather than being unduly influenced by the positions and interests of Korea's neighbors. The second principle is that we should actively pursue international collaborations by securing cooperation and support of other states concerned. The Korean Peninsula should not fall into a field of rivalry and confrontation among the states concerned, but provide a forum where these states pool their wisdom and cooperation. The third principle is that the North Korea policy should be implemented with the firm support of the Korean people. The policy should be founded on a solid national consensus. Taking on board, the people is essential for the success of the policy. Every effort should be made so that the policy does not turn into a ground for the South-South conflict, a political conflict within the South. We should aim for repertement with the North through various channels. Dialogue between the government authorities should be one of these channels. These channels should include the government authorities, civil society, and international organizations. In pursuing repertement with the North, one should focus on the dialogues that should translate into concrete results and contribute to the resolution of pending problems, rather than dialogues for the purpose of dialogues or photo-oriented dialogues. We should provide the assistance which North is in need of and which the South is capable of offering. It is important to provide assistance based on the principle of verification and mutual benefit. In carrying out this policy, the South-North relations should be managed on the principle of simultaneous performance of the respective obligations. Instead of providing assistance to the North first and being repaid later, the repayment from the North need not necessarily be at the same level as the assistance provided. Inter-German cooperation in the pre-unification period was also carried out on such basis. It will be important to put in place a mechanism through which the assistance provided by the South will be publicized domestically so that the North Korean population will be aware of it. The South-North relations should be approached on a pragmatic basis, instead of being hindered by rhetorical and symbolic problems. For such a pragmatic approach, it is required for one to be flexible to a certain extent, untrammled by rigid preconceptions. The basic approach is the simultaneous pursuit of deterrence and engagement. The fundamental foundation of our North Korea policy is the firm and unyielding security policy, which should strengthen our self-confidence and help us to take the initiative in dealing with North. A firm and unyielding security policy does not operate only at the military dimension. We should put in place a comprehensive and multi-dimensional system for deterrence, including the political, diplomatic, and economic aspects as well. To that end, we should share with other states concerned a blueprint for the peaceful coexistence and ultimate unification of Korean Peninsula. In approaching the issue of peaceful coexistence, we should adopt the policy that simultaneously addresses the set of questions pending between the South and the North, rather than the policy of progressing from the easy to difficult questions. We should focus not on easy questions, but on difficult and important questions that require speedy resolution. Past experience shows that the resolution of easy questions did not really lead to the resolution of difficult questions. From this perspective, we should take a more active approach to the security question. It is all but impossible to pursue exchange and cooperation between the South and North under the crowd of security threat coming from the North. It is imperative to restore dialogue between the South and the North. This does not mean that we should pursue dialogue with the North at whatever cost. What we need is a dialogue that will lead to the resolution of concrete problems. There should be a variety of reasons why the North refuses to come to the negotiating table. It is important to create a situation under which the North will feel motivated and even compelled to accept our offer for dialogue. We should give a positive consideration to the option of dialogue and contact at the civilian level. We should also consider the method of dialogue with the North through the intermediary of third stage. We should start by conveying our true intent to the North and then understanding the intent and position of the North, then proceeding to setting the concrete agenda for the dialogue and actually carrying out the negotiations. It is about time for us to engage in an assertive peace and dialogue of our own vis-à-vis the North. The two Koreas find themselves in a relationship of mutual complementarity in terms of economic structure. It will be mutually beneficial to combine the capital and technology of the South with the labor force of the North. It is of utmost importance to remind North Korea that the South remains the most significant partner of economic cooperation to the North. However, we are confronted with the undeniable fact that the May 21 measures, a series of sanctions imposed on the North on May 21, 2010, is a stumbling block to the economic cooperation with the North. We should come up with some new measure to overcome the current impasse in a pragmatic and flexible manner while adhering to the principle and spirit of the measures. The North should show that it is trustworthy, acting according to international norms in the field of economic exchange and cooperation. For instance, the recent case of North unilaterally hiking the wages in the Gassong industrial complex serves no useful purpose, only hindering the economic cooperation with the South. By faithfully implementing the agreements made with the South and other countries, the North should prove itself to be a trustworthy partner. It is evident that one needs a highly specialized and trained labor force to further carry out economic cooperation. The North should go beyond the stage of just providing a simple labor force to the South's businesses. To achieve economic development with its own material and human resources, the North should secure a highly specialized labor force. The South can provide an active assistance if the North wants. There would be no need for the North's future workforce to receive education and training in third countries in foreign languages. We need to reconsider the content of economic cooperation with the North. Alongside the large-scale project of cooperation and infrastructure development, we should push for small-scale regional projects of cooperation that will bring that will bring direct benefits to the North Korean populations. The human security situation in the North that impacts directly on the life of North Korean population is very serious. It is reported that the food situation has improved, but it is undeniable that the food problem cannot be resolved without outside assistance. We should not forget that the nutritional imbalance in the North is in dire situation. Millions of them are suffering from tuberculosis. Please look at the slide. It is statistics of WHO published in October 2014. The number of TB patients in the North is four times higher than South. Also, general hospital facilities are falling behind. North Koreans are not just anybody. They are human beings that the world needs to care about. It is urgent to provide public health service on extensive scale. One can safely draw a conclusion from the above mentioned that a massive medical assistance to the North is imperative. The issue of families separated into the South and the North symbolizes the pain and suffering of national division of Korea. The Korean government has made great efforts to resolve this issue, but one has to admit that much is to be done to reach our goal. Regarding the issue of separated families, we should give priority to the policy of asserting the survival or death of the family members, finding out their whereabouts and correspondence, rather than organizing reunion events. These events can accommodate at most 100 persons at one time, a number which is too small given the huge number of families separated into the South and the North. More efforts should be directed to the policy of securing a solid base from which those families will be able to know about the survivor or death and whereabouts and communicate with each other. The serious human rights situation in the North has been fully publicized by the United Nations Commission of Inquiry Report. If we shy away from doing what we should do in fear of the North's hostile reactions, then we rely on our responsibility to the North Korean population. We should act in a confident and principled manner concerning the human rights problems in the North. The bill for human rights in North Korea is under active consideration throughout the South, in particular, the Korean National Assembly. It's already late, but it's a relief. A meeting between the coordinating members of the National Assembly Foreign Affairs and Unification Committee is scheduled today. As not only the chair of the committee, but also as the representative who submitted the resolution on North human rights for the first time when I was first term almost 10 years ago, I promise that the committee will do its utmost to bring a speedy conclusion to this matter through an active consultation between the political parties and surveying the public opinion as well. As has been clearly demonstrated by the difficulties the North Korean defectors have faced in the process of their readjustment to the South, the social differences and heterogeneity ties between the two Koreas have reached serious proportions for the past 70 years of national division. I believe this will be the single biggest stumbling block in the process of national unification. To overcome this problem, there is no other way than to expand the human exchange and contact in the wide-ranging fields such as sports, culture and arts, science and technology, and academia. We can promote mutual understanding through such exchanges and contact for the furtherance of which we should come up with a variety of concrete ideas. The most serious problem in the current relations between the South and the North is without doubt that of North Korean nuclear program. At the very moment, North Korea's nuclear and missile capabilities are being upgraded, posing a serious threat to our security. This issue cannot be resolved between the South and the North, but should find a solution through an international collaboration. We should not be complacent that time is on our side. We should give priority to the restoration and strengthening of five-party cooperation. Despite the persistence of various bilateral problems among the five parties, they are urged to focus more on how to secure a coordinated approach to the North Korean nuclear problem. The Republic of Korea, which is potentially the biggest victim of the North's program, should play a leading role in restoring the five-party cooperation and in so doing, finding opportunities for the final resolution of the problem. The opportunity for the final resolution will present itself only after the five-party coordination is in place. It is important for the five parties to speak in one voice. It is beyond doubt that the complete de-nuclearization of North Korea is the ultimate goal. However, in pursuing this goal, the five parties should work together to reactivate the six-party talks to achieve the interim goal of freezing the North's nuclear capabilities. The United States and China have put forth the respective version of strategic patience, in effect, letting North Korea get away with its nuclear program. We all know the result, the strengthening of nuclear threat posed by North Korea. We should manage the situation with a new approach that shifts focus to the policy of freezing North Korea's nuclear capabilities as an interim goal on the way leading to the final goal of complete de-nuclearization of North Korea. North Korea has continued to engage in military provocations such as the sinking of Chonan, the shelling of Yom Pong Island, the cyber attacks, the test-launching of missiles, and the dispatch of donors, drones. The North should stop such provocations immediately and accept the South's proposals for dialogue and cooperation. To prevent the North from engaging in further provocations, the following two measures should be implemented simultaneously. The first was already mentioned above, that is, strengthening our military preparedness and increasing our deterrence capabilities. Through this, we have to make the North clearly aware that any provocation will be not only useless, but also detrimental to its interests. In tandem with such a deterrence policy, we have to implement the policy of dialogue and consultation with a view to reducing military tension with the North and promoting stability on the Korean Peninsula. Drawing lessons from the experiences gained in the early 1990s in the field of arms control, we have to send clear messages on our position regarding the military threat coming from the North and secure its positive responses. It is needless to say that this is no easy task. At the same time, it is also clear that we cannot afford to put off this difficult task to a later date. Is Korean unification a jackpot for the Korean people? Do you agree? My answer is an reserved yes. However, we need to remind ourselves that if we approach the issue of unification without appropriate step-by-step measures, the dream of hitting a jackpot may morph into a huge nightmare. We need to take a more pragmatic and flexible approach to the question of national unification by admitting that there could and should be various interim stages, such as cooperation, confederation, and integration on the way leading finally to complete unification. In taking such an approach, we should also devise ways to minimize the shocks or other negative impacts expected to arise in various stages of transition. To turn Korean unification into genuine case of hitting the jackpot, we have to make a number of meticulous preparations. Various efforts should be made, no expanded mutual understanding between the two Koreas by articulating concrete load maps leading to the final unification. The jackpot called Korean unification is not something given from outside whereby pure law. It is a jackpot of our own making. This jackpot is also for the world. We should make every effort so that the two Koreas will be able to proceed to a common future via a stage of peaceful coexistence. Thank you.
And we'll now take some questions for the lawmaker Na after the last session. Does anyone have a question for lawmaker Na? Oh, yes, lady here in the third row. We'll pass you the mic so you can speak smaller.
One is, after all the posts and the reports come out in the papers, and we are from 60 countries, so there'll be different kind of reports. What kind of a response are you expecting from North Korea on this? And second is, when you talked about human capital and the labor force which North Korea needs to specialize in, what kind of reactions have you had to that on these proposals on specialization and trainings and education?
Please, one more time, first question.
First question is that when all the reports from this conference go out into the world, what kind of response are you anticipating from North Korea? How will it react to this?
I will answer in Korean.
So, 북한으로서는 이러한 우리의 지금 남북관계의 신뢰 회복을 위한 여러 가지 조치에 대해서 적극적인 어떤 그 적극적인 환영과 그리고 그러한 조치를 기대해 보고요. 북한이 그렇게 나오기를 기대해 보고요. 두 번째 아까 인적 자본 이야기는 다른 이야기가 아닙니다. 지금 이제 통일 이후의 남북간의 경제관계가 과연 어떻게 될 것인가? 그리고 중간 단계로서의 경제 협력을 생각할 수 있는데, 그렇다면 역시 한국의 자본과 기술력과 그리고 북한의 노동력의 결합이라고 생각을 합니다. 그래서 더 많은 경제 교류 속에서 이러한 것이 자연스럽게 이루어질 거라고 생각을 하고요. 이미 중간에 강조한 것처럼 이러한 경제 교류를 위해서 지금 오이사 조치로 인하여 우리가 어떠한 구체적인 경제 협력이라든지 투자라든지 이러한 것이 원천적으로 지금 불가능하게 되어 있습니다. 그래서 이 오이사 조치의 원칙과 정신은 직기대. 조금 더 유연한 접근을 통해서 우리가 새로운 조치를 내리는 방법도 좋은 방법이라고 생각을 하는데요. 그렇게 해서 남북간의 경제 교류가 좀더 활발하게 된다면 이러한 노동력은 뭐 국가에서 정부에서 어떤 교육을 시킨다는 것이 아니라 기업 간의 그러한 교류를 통해서 자연스럽게 이루어질 거라고 생각을 합니다.
I will briefly summarize lawmaker Na's response to the first question she responded that it is not a phase that we're just looking for a dreamy vision of jackpot unification, but it's now time for us to set a concrete roadmap for at least a mid-to-long-term period, and that's what we should be doing right now. And so should the North be prepared and respond in a way that we can actually prepare a mid-to-long-term roadmap to unification, and it should not be just a vague term of hitting the jackpot, although it may sound like when the president Park first mentioned the term that the unification could be a bonanza for the both Koreas. And the second, when you mentioned about the human capitals and the commercialization of the North Korea, she said that all the merging of the human capital that the North possesses and the assets and the businesses and our infrastructure that the South has will be taking place very shortly and gradually once the unification takes place, and that should be natural and not be forced in any way. And so same goes for labor and assets in any terms of economic infrastructure we're talking about. And we could only take one more question because lawmaker Na must leave in five minutes. We'll proceed with her in the third row, please.
Thank you. You're speaking of military preparedness.
You're speaking of military preparedness and dialogue at the same time. I think that's one of the keys of what you presented. However, in history, in the 1990s, there was a project to have North Korea suspend its processing of plutonium in exchange for a gas-powered energy plant. And this exchange failed completely. Now, are you trying to redo this with success today?
실질적으로 지금 북핵 문제를 한반도의 비핵화, 북한의 비핵화를의 그 궁극적 목적 아래서 어떠한 교류도 없고, 더 이상의 어떠한 핵 능력을 동결시킨다든지 또는 군사적인 어떤 군사적인 군축이라든지 이러한 부분에 대한 전혀 논의가 없습니다. 사실상 이렇게 비핵화라는 궁극적 목적 아래서 북한의 핵 능력은 증강되어 왔기 때문에 저는 사실상 우리가 지속적인 노력을 해야 된다고 생각을 합니다. 그런 의미에서 두 가지 같이 이루어져야 된다고 지속적인 노력을 해야 되고, 그 노력은 단순히 경제 교류가 먼저고 또는 대화가 먼저고 그 다음 군사적 핵 문제 해결을 위한 노력이 아니라 두 개가 동시에 이루어져야 된다는 이야기입니다. 아무것도 안 하는 것보다는 하는 것이 맞다고 생각합니다.
In a nutshell, she just said that we haven't always pushing for the denuclearizing North Korea all the while, but the North Korea has been strengthening and enhancing their capabilities in nuclear activities as well as arms and their plants in all terms. So it's not just the right way to push for denuclearizing North Korea, but we should also keep in various ways including the dialogue, including economic ties and investment, which have come to standstill right now. And she's saying it's better to do something than not doing anything.
We have one quick question for maybe two minutes before she leaves. Anyone has last words for professor Law, for lawmaker La? Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, madam chair, for extensive presentation about Korea's Korean unification. My query is, I'm listening today at least this two sessions. Somehow, somehow, somewhere I find some contradictions, contradictory views among the leadership among the leadership in Korea on the question of unification. Tell me, what is the exact way to unite Korea or just to give step-by-step as you mentioned? What would be the best way to unify the Korea? I mean, step-by-step, like going from initially from just making the lessons or going for unifications?
오늘 제가 얘기할 것은 한국 정부의 공식적인 입장이라기보다는 저의 통일 정책에 대한 저의 견해입니다. 그 단계별 통일이라고 꼭 이름을 붙이는 것은 맞지 않다고 할수 있는데 제가 드리고 싶은 말씀은 우리가 통일이라는 궁극적 목적만을 이야기하기보다는 중간 단계에 우리가 같이 갈수 있는 평화공존 체계를 만드는 것이라고 보시면 될것 같습니다. 통일은 갑자기 올 수도 있지만 그러나 통일을 위한 우리가 평화공존의 노력을 해야 된다고 생각을 하고요. 저는 사실 개인적으로 이러한 평화공존의 단계를 반드시 걸쳐야 된다고 생각하는데 그 이유는 실질적인 어떤 통일 후의 경제적 비용이라든지 사회적 비용을 줄이는 부분도 있지만 무엇보다도 통일 후에 진정으로 통합된 대한민국을 만들기 위해서는 이러한 공존의 단계가 필요하지 않나 이렇게 생각을 합니다.
So she stressed that unification should not be the destination or means, but the process or the ways that we reach to the phase of unification matters more than how we do it. So it's not necessarily representing the government's point of view, but she says be trust-building and a mid-to-long term of establishing peace on the Korean Peninsula is the important matter which we must pass in the way of our process towards reaching unification. And that is necessary because we have to consider all the socioeconomic costs that will take place when the unification actually takes place and how solidified and how consolidated the two Koreas are is more important. That could actually reduce the impact of the unification of the two Koreas when it does take place.
Thank you. Have a pleasant street. And I'm sure unification will be a jackpot, not only in Korea, but in the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much, lawmaker and the chairwoman of the National Assembly's Foreign Affairs and Unification Commission. And with this, we wrap up the last session of the 2015 World Journalist Conference, day one on this Monday. And I believe after this series of lectures with a theme on the 70th anniversary of National Division and think about unification on the Korean Peninsula and all the participants have realized the importance of peaceful unification on the Korean Peninsula. Thank you all again for your undivided attention for such a long time that went throughout the day. Thank you very much.